Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is the Select Board meeting on Wednesday, April 17th at 5:30 at the Lakeville Police Station. Other than Lakeham, is anybody recording the meeting? Okay. So just to give everybody a little prelim as to why we're here tonight. Back in March, we received a presentation from the Town Administrator about the upcoming budget for FY25. Great job, thank you very much. And starting this evening, there's going to be three nights. So tonight, we start with our meeting with some of our department heads. We'll have another meeting tomorrow evening, and then we'll have another one on Thursday. So this will give the Board and the Finance Committee an opportunity to hear what's going on in your budget, and what's going on in your department, and kind of what the landscape's going to look like. So with us tonight is our Finance Committee, and I believe you have your form, so we can call you to order.
All right, so called to order the meeting, Finance Committee meeting for today, April 17th. In attendance, Christopher Blanca, Chair, Larry Kostant, member and Larry, sorry, member Darren Beal.
Excellent. The Select Board is here in full form. I believe we have Maureen Candido on remote. Is that true? Or maybe she'll be joining us. I know that was the plan, so. Here tonight, we have Lea Fabian, Brenna Donahue, Ryan Day, and myself. All right, so the first order of business, I'm actually going to take somebody out of order, because I have the ability to do that. So I'd like to invite David Freitz, our Animal Control Officer, up to the left seat here, please.
So this is page 43 in your binders, in the Public Safety section of the budget.
So Mr. Nunes and Todd, if you're interested in, you know, jumping in or even whatever, please do so.
Thank you.
Hi, David, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Okay, so what do you got for us, David?
Not too much. I'm putting in my new truck.
Okay.
This year, because the other one's a 2002.
Okay.
And they told me it's the last year for the sticker. We got a sticker on it two days ago, about three days ago, but it's, uh, frame's going. Billy at the, uh, made a recommendation to the Select Board that it couldn't be.
Okay, and if I'm not mistaken, that's part of our capital?
Yep, that's on the cap.
Correct.
Okay, absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the only request. And just as a reminder for folks, Madam Chair, if we, so that people know, over the last couple of years, there's been a whole lot of work done to the facility. So it's looking nicer there than it ever has in a long time. And Dave's been following that work pretty well. So I think the only capital request this year was for the...
The new vehicle.
Yep. Yeah, and looking at the, you know, the budget for where you're looking to go for FY25, it doesn't look like much has changed within the budget itself. But it looks like you have accomplished in FY23, '24, you paid for about 127 dogs.
Yep.
That's quite a, quite a bit in the calendar year.
We're going to beat that this year. We got 60 already this year.
Wow, and it's only April, April. It looks like you've collected over $20,000 in donations, and about 2,800 in vet care donations up to date. Wow.
That's not the regular donation.
Wow, 28,00, that's a lot.
What's that?
2,800's a lot. For vet care.
Yeah, the other, we have another account, too.
And that's not part of the...
Right.
Yep, so this is on your own, and I know you've supplemented a few initiatives that you've, that you've done.
Like the floors and stuff. We did the floors over.
Keeping the shelter up to date, so you can, you know, manage better. And it looks like you'll continue your participation in the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, municipal partnership program for the spay and neuter of stray and surrendered animals. You've also established a relationship with the Medfield Insituate Animal Shelters and Happy Tail Beagle Rescues. I do believe we have a few beagles in Lakeville.
We get a plot through. That's what most we got this year. We got two more today.
Really? Wow. And it looks like you've increased the use of your social media to showcase the adoptable dogs and, you know, what happens at the shelter. And I think that, you know, for myself, I do see a lot of that interaction and, you know, it just lets people stay more in tune with what activities you have going on there, too.
We got a lot of corporate donators now and everything, from not even from this state.
Would you be able to coordinate some sort of adoption event at Lakeville Day with the Parks Department, with the Parks Commission?
I could. We have nothing right now to adopt. Our biggest problem is getting the vets to do anything right now. There's so much of a shortage on vets.
David won a grant from a trust for his social media use of $5,000. They, they sent it, I think it was basically like Foxborough, and it was based solely on his social media.
Oh, that's fantastic.
And we are looking to develop a relationship with Crystal Aggie, the vet over there, reached out to us, and they have, they have a teaching program now for veterinarian care. And he said he would like to establish a relationship and do vaccinations and spay-neuter for our shelter dogs.
Oh, that's good news.
Yeah.
On Friday night, I'm going to be getting a Good Citizenship Award from the Middle Ball, uh, Middle Ball, what is it, Trace?
The Silver Dollar Ranch.
Congratulations. Is that something that we could attend, or?
Anybody can go.
Okay, we all have the details.
Tracy has the hours.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the Board? Have any questions for David?
No many questions, just want to say, as always, fantastic work. I live right around the corner, and you almost never go by when Dave's not there taking care of something. So it's nice to see the shelter's in tip-top shape, and, you know, every, every animal gets taken care of.
I was happy to see Bob come today and check the place out.
Thank you for the tour.
Except for the, except for the bar.
Mr. Jim, did you move the reserve?
Did they take it down?
Yeah, we took it down.
Do not.
How you feel?
I have no questions. No questions, Finance Committee.
What's that, Dave?
No questions, Finance Committee.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, David, thank you very much for coming in.
And I gotta go do adoptions. Thank you for taking me for a, for a adoption, so.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
David, is any of that, David, are any of those things yours?
Yeah. The phone? That I would like to forget.
Okay, Town Administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Page eight, under General Government, toward the beginning of the detailed budget.
So the Select Board budget is on page 10. Obviously, we fund the five Select Board members, and we do have a salary of $165,000 for Town Administrator. Obviously, that'll be subject to negotiations, but that is what is currently included in the budget and obviously can be adjusted for the next Town Administrator, whatever their salary may be. So it's a minimal increase to the bottom line.
That's really the only change that I've noticed, too, was for that salary line item.
The two extra, the two additional...
And then the additional chi...
The two additional Board members, yeah.
And I would just point out to the group that the first line under the Select Board expenses, you'll notice, is up $10,000. And that's because every other year, we have to have an independent actuarial study done for our post-employment benefits for active and retired employees. We also are going to be subject to additional audit expense and a separate audit report regarding our federal aid through the ARPA program. So, and then in FY26, this number should go down, because the actuarial work is, uh, the lion's share of it's done every other year, so.
All right, and as far as legal, I know that, you know, that's kind of a moving target, but... So we had originally in, let's see, FY24, 75,000. Are we still pretty much in line?
We'll likely need a transfer by year-end. We've got, from memory, about 16,000 left, and that has to cover four months of legal services, including town meetings. So we've, we've have a placeholder for a transfer that the groups would consider later in the year.
We received invoices up until February, so.
Yeah, so.
Yep, definitely will need a transfer, yes.
But not to the degree we did last year.
Right.
I don't think, yeah.
All right, anybody from the Board have any questions? Um, not necessarily a question, but as part of the Town Administrator search, I think we should, at some point, sooner than later, specifically talk about the Town Administrator salary, just so everyone's on the same page. Well, that's a good idea. I know Monday night's meeting is looking pretty busy, but... And if I can just point out a few of the accomplishments for the FY23, '24. Made a number of significant investments in the town cybersecurity profile, including securing a $44,000 IT infrastructure grant through the Commonwealth Community Compact Grant Program, and to add more robust disaster recovery capability to the town's network. The town and TMLP also completed the fiber installation project, uniting all municipal properties under the same network. That's, that was a big, big deal. We've also applied for and received a grant, award of $30,000, to supplement a town match to replace the roof at the historic townhouse. We've also transitioned the Green Communities annual report from the town's long-term, longtime contractor and founding participant on the team, and secured Lakeville's original Green Communities designation to the Southeastern Regional Planning Economic Development District, which is also known as SERPD. And we've also began working on the Building Committee to design and construct a new fire station. So we've had some, uh, work, good things going on. All right, Finance Committee?
I actually have a couple of questions. Could you just talk about the big decrease in other contracted services, and then the big increase in telephone, relatively big?
Yeah, we needed to balance the budget. So the contracted services look at what has been expended in the past. I made the decision to cut that line item, and as, and what was the other?
Telephone up by $9,000.
Based on previous year expenditure in fiscal year '23.
Okay, '24 is 21, and '25 is 30, so.
Yeah, so that, again, it's kind of a guesstimate, you know, based on past usage.
Is that landlines, or is that all landline, or where, I guess, what is the telephone?
I don't know, but our IT director can answer. We'll remember to ask him tomorrow night, unless, Brian.
I think, this might not be accurate, but I think we also put in a redundant line for the telephone system at Town Hall, because it was all running to the police station. That may or may not be it, but that is kind of a memory of something I think of in the last year.
We'll follow up on that, yeah.
Around there, if you take...
Yeah, okay, okay.
So there might be monthly cost for that extra line, if that's what it is.
I think you're right, but we'll double-check with Bob.
Okay, thank you.
I did have one question, if I may. I know this is a relatively new thing that came up at our last Board meeting, but on, we discussed potentially having Town Council provide more than our two classes over the next year. So I don't know if that would come out of legal costs or our training and education program costs, and whether or not we'd need to bump that up at all. And it doesn't look like we specked off the last few years from those lines. So we've got 2,500 for training and education. I mean, we might not have the answer tonight, but I just wanted to mention it in case it's worth looking at.
I think most, if I'm not mistaken, most of the departments have a training and education line for themselves. So whatever we put in here would be considered for, you know, Select Board as well as Town Line.
Yeah, like some of the, like some of the stuff that we talked about that was more broad for all the committees and such. I didn't know if that would come out of this line or not.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
My MCPPO classes come out of that line, so it fluctuates how much. My designation is expiring next year, so I am starting, taking that, that week. So I'm going to be starting to access funding for that.
So let's, um, let's make a note on that, Brian, and we'll find out a little bit more what the cost would be, you know, for them to come in and...
I will find that out.
Yeah.
You're talking K P.
Yes.
Yeah, that menu of classes that's sent out. I don't know if it's $200 a day or $2,000 a day.
They usually do two, right? Right, we get two free, yeah. And then if we wanted to expand, which, it would be nice to know what they, they charge. You know, maybe we can negotiate, who knows? There's always that opportunity. All right, anybody else for Town Administrator?
Yeah, I, just a question, you may have answered this last year, and I don't recall, but in other general government, you know, you got electric, fuel, water service, all that, all zeroed out for the past three years. Have we cut power to all these buildings in OReed, or what happened?
No, if you recall, a year or so ago, we, we combined under Department 192 on page 11, electricity, heating, fuel, and water service for the old Town Hall, the, um, the old library, where we have inspectional services now, and Town Hall. So they're all, they were in three different budgets, and we combined them into the public building budget. Yeah.
Hi, Madam Chair, I have a question on the reserve funds. Cut to 75K. I believe the Board's financial policy states a minimum of 150K for that. Is that confirmed?
It's, uh, so the Board does have an older policy in place that says the reserve fund should be funded between 100,000 and 300,000. And we've historically done 150. Years ago, a few years ago, it was as high as 200,000. Our rationale here was that in recent years, state law has changed and allowed cities and towns to do what's referred to as departmental transfers. And you'll recall, we do a lot of those between May 1st and mid-July at year-end. And that, that's a case where if the fire department, for example, needed overtime money, which never happens, right, Chief? But the police department was having a good year budget-wise, we'd ask to reduce, you know, transfer from the police budget to fire. So we didn't have that mechanism several years ago, cities and towns. So our rationale was the need for extraordinary, um, needs from, from the reserve fund has diminished. That's not to say we don't have a really bad winter, in which case we might need to go to town meeting. But the Board could certainly consider moving this up to 100, at least to your, your policy minimum.
So we do have a policy?
Yes, Chris actually pointed it out to us.
Okay, so that's, you know, it would be going outside of our policy.
Right, correct.
So we would have to vote to...
Suspend the rules or something?
Right, or something.
Well, is that something we want to revisit at the end of all these? In case we find something to move?
Yep. Yeah, I guess that would, everything Todd just offered, being able to move between the lines, would be a reason to actually look at the policy. Because if that wasn't available to us in the past, it doesn't help us today. But when we're talking about policies, which I think we've all discussed, we should do, maybe that's another one that we look at with that new information. You have a notebook?
I can also offer, and I know it's early, but I've done a preliminary listing of where we have potential needs this year for transfers, and there are about eight items, one of which would, we've submitted a reserve fund transfer request. The other seven, we've all have funding from existing other budgets that we'd be proposing to you after May 1st, the two groups to consider. And we don't anticipate, at this time, needing to use any more than 11,000 from this year's $150,000, just as a point of, and every year's different, as you know.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And that 11,000 is for the MRI contract for the Town Administrator search, which I believe is on your agenda this evening.
To vote to?
We tabled this in the last meeting, because we have a few questions.
Okay.
So we'll vote, this got to vote tonight.
Okay, all right. Hey, anybody else for Town Administrator? All right. Treasurer Collector.
So this will be page 18 in your binders.
Nice to see you all.
Hello, how are you all?
Good evening.
All right, so first off is salaries. The salaries are pretty much just either the colas or the step increases. And then for expenses, the banking services, and let's see, printing, are the two that I would, I'm asking for a bit more from the prior year. The printing company has gone up on their pricing, so that's what precipitated that increase. And the banking, we're using a new financial advisor, which is a little bit more costly than our prior one. But not only that, we have a, we did a bit more borrowing than in prior years.
Looks like you have some accomplishments that I'd like to announce here. You took advantage of the high interest rates to earn better investment earnings. So four tax title payment plans were actually paid off. Unpaid bills were sent, what was it, sent unbilled, unpaid bills to demand status to the Deputy Collector, and I know none of us like to hear any of that, but it does help the collection rate. And you raised the demand fee from 15 to 20, I remember that, which was accepted at the May 8th, '23 Town Meeting, so. Anybody from the Board?
I'd just like to say thank you for the responsiveness, your department, every time we reach out with a crazy question, gets right back to us, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Finance Committee?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a quick question on the Assistant Treasurer salary. Percentage-wise, it's much higher.
So there was a snafu last...
Yeah, let me, you don't mind?
No, not at all.
This year's budget was put in one step lower than it should have been.
Okay.
And we won't have a bottom-line problem this year, because Erica, Erica's other position turned over, and we had a gap, so. So you're right, it, it looks very high, but that line is underfunded this year and properly set for next year, and...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, anybody else? Okay, thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you as well.
Another town clerk.
This is page 24 in your binder.
Good evening, Will. Good evening. Nice to see you. Maureen, are you here?
I am.
Welcome.
Worktime's a charm.
Well, welcome, I keep hearing all these little noises, and sounded like somebody was coming online. Welcome. Okay, go ahead, Will.
All right, okay. So on my budget, the Assistant Town Clerk stayed at grade C, Step 6, with an increase. The hourly wage temporary help was increased due to the vote by mail. These are the election workers that come in and prepare all the kids for me, which is very time-consuming, especially when we have close to 9,300 registered voters, and it feels like the majority of them are asking to vote by mail. So we're here to facilitate that. My expenses, other contracted services that did do, had to increase that. We have shredding on-site, that of course, I inherited the King Information System, which is the retention and disposal schedule. That is, I don't know if you have had a chance to look at the, at our basement, which we have everything nicely organized. So King's Information is an excellent company that will come in and do, destroy anything that needs to be destroyed after the retention. So of course, I'm taking care of the, the whole Town Hall for that. So it's a, I have to also take care of the database, so it's a, it's a little bit time-consuming. The, my elections on the voting equipment had to go up. We do have seven poll pads and six image cast voting machines. The maintenance of that have gone up. These machines are at least six years old. Even though they look new to Lakeville, they're a little bit, they're going to need to be replaced. But we'll make do for now. Registrations by increase went up on that. Paper has gone up. Printing has gone up, so you'll see a small increase in my budget for that.
And if I may, just for the group, we did hand out a revised numbers list sheet tonight, and there was one change from the original document. We've added a $22,000 part-time clerk position to support the Town Clerk's office, and that is a direct reduction of the floater position in the HR budget, so it's a net zero. So you'll see a $22,000 increase here and a $22,000 decrease in the HR budget. Same bottom line as originally proposed.
Would that be a permanent part-time position going forward?
Yes, permanent part-time, that's the intention, yep.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? I want to know if that's strictly dedicated to the Town Clerk's office for those hours.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yep.
That is affirmative.
Thank you.
And that might help some of the, you know, the hourly wage as well, too, so.
I was not anticipating having that in my budget when this was created, so thank you for that. This is something that I was looking forward four years ago, when we were trying to get ready for the 2020 election. So at least going forward, my office is in good shape in regards to that. We do have the staff, I don't have where to put this person, but you know, we'll make, we'll figure it out. Yeah, we'll make a little small home for her.
So because this is put in the FY25 budget, we wouldn't necessarily, technically, wouldn't be posting that until after Town Meeting approves the budget, correct?
To see if they approve it, yes.
Okay. All right, so just a little while longer, but Will... Oh, that's okay.
We could certainly post an anticipated position. Position, that way we could get it filled by July 1st.
Okay, so that's an idea.
Where Town Meeting's in June.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, hi.
Madam Chair, I know the Town Clerk doesn't have anything on the capital plan over the next five years, but I think she did have something in the ARPA project. I don't know if that's appropriate to ask now, since she's here. Only because she mentioned the voting machines, are those the tabulators?
These are, these are the tabulators. Those are the machines that you see on the top of the voting boxes. These are faster voting machines, and of course, I'm preparing myself for 2030, in which we'll end up with a fourth precinct. Unfortunately, these machines are... Unfortunately, these machines are almost towards the end of its lifespan. Even though they're like five years old, at least the new machines that are coming forward, they're faster. The battery life is lasts longer.
So I think my question is then gonna be, should we have that somewhere in the capital plan? Because I don't see it right now.
They added it to the.
Maybe it's not this FY.
ARPA.
But if that didn't work out for one reason.
Oh, yes.
Should we have accounted for it somewhere?
Well, we still have time.
Yeah, we still have time.
But certainly.
See how it goes.
Yeah, and you have six, six machines, is it?
I do, so I needed a seventh machine.
You need a seventh?
Yes. Two for the precinct and one extra.
In regards to the tabulators, Lilian did provide backup documentation that will be in the packet for Monday evening.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. I also wanted to share with you, I did give you a memo, that I was, that Lacey was able to share with me a comparison of the pay for our department heads along with their assistants. And so you'll see that in page three, that according to this information, we have a department heads along with their assistants with some kind of pay range. And if you notice, my pay range along with my assistant, I'm around 11%. Where other department heads, they're between 26 up to 42%. So I am looking, and I'm hoping that townspeople will see, that my pay has not increased in 10 years. So I've had that same pay and I inherited that from my predecessors. So my pay for only has been increased by through the cola, which, you know, thank you very much for doing that every year. But I haven't come before the select board for a pay increase. I felt that my assistants that I had previous always deserve a pay increase because, number one, it had to be through, through the union anyways. So my pay increase is somewhat close to a 25%, which is in line with the department heads. And the rationale for this is if you see the population of these other towns that I've mentioned, their salary is around 90,000, 95, 93,000, which mine would be at 75. I'm bringing to the plate for Lakeville, 10 years worth of experience, my certifications, which is national and statewide. Lakeville is well represented in the Town Clerk's world. And not only that, but my complexity of my job has increased. I know I had brought forward in 2022, November 22, a special town meeting for my position to be appointed. And I think it's something that the town needs to look at in the near future because of the complexity of my job. And I feel that, just looking at the past four or five years, I know you attracted new employees with higher pay increases and of course a nice decent packages. But what about the people that's been doing the job for a while and were still like behind the eight ball? That's how I look at it. And I know that my classification and compensation study was done of August of last year. And I don't know where we stand with that. And I know I had asked to be part of that compensation. And I feel that I, I feel that I'm still underpaid throughout that compensation. I feel like that came through, but no one has shared that with me. And as you can see, I've been a dedicated employee for 24 years. You're a Town Clerk for 10 years. I'm not going anywhere unless I hit the lottery, but still I'll be here. And I just feel that, I think it, I know every year, I, I have asked in the past and they keep saying, you know, this is not the year for a pay increase, my pay increase, even though everybody's getting a stepping piece and a pay increase. And I feel that this, it's time for me for this year. I feel that, I feel like I've been left behind. So I know it's up to the townspeople to, to vote on that, but I'm asking for your support.
I think, well, I know it's not easy to advocate.
No, it's not easy.
You know, for yourself and.
Especially when I'm elected.
So that was one of the things I actually circled when I was going through, because it did seem rather low, considering the experience and what everybody else is getting. And then are you considering re-adding that to the warrant article for the spring meeting?
It closed, the warrant articles have closed, but I'm thinking of considering maybe for the November?
Yeah.
Or maybe the April of next year.
Okay.
Yes.
Madam Chair, in regards to the wage and classification study, we had a discussion this past week. And I know the chair is looking to schedule it for, within the next several weeks, I would assume. And obviously the opposition is part of that study.
Thank you very much, thank you.
We haven't shared it with any of the employees because the select board, they have yet to see it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we haven't seen it to discuss.
Exactly.
Oh, good.
There are several positions that are highlighted.
Oh, okay. Anybody else on the board?
Yeah, if I may. I mean, it's, I'm glad Brenna caught on to it, because it definitely is a discrepancy from a lot of our other department heads. Any of us drive by late at night, early morning, weekend, we all know your voice is very fine.
I know, right?
I mean, I definitely would like to have a discussion on this, whether it's tonight or in the future, on fixing this. I don't know that it's done in one year, if it's something we roll in over a couple of years. But I do think it's just not where it needs to be.
I'm okay with that if that's how it's gonna go, but I really, yeah, it needs to be looked at, at least considered.
And I, and I'd also, Madam Chair, I'd like to comment on that. I'd really love to see that wage and personnel study, just in order to, to see what it came up with for numbers. And if we have something that we need to address, we should probably be looking at that and working towards that as soon as possible.
Finance Committee? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Human Resources, page 20. This also has a newer handout regarding the position, the reduction of the floater move to the Town Clerk office we mentioned.
Good evening, Lacey.
Good evening.
Hey. This is your first one.
This is my first one. Very intimidating, that girl. Okay, so the director's position went up by the 3% cola. Admin assistant got his step increase and also the 3%. And then as we spoke about originally, it was about $30,000 that the HR was getting. And then we did the split, so now Town Clerk has 22 and HR is retaining 8,000 for the floaters. Moving down, historically, the payroll services is $12,000. I put the $2,000 in because I'm looking to upgrade the services a little bit in the database to give us better capability on track in employees. So that's why that, that's that little bit of an increase. Contracted services, so that actually entails everything. It's the Safer Places, which is how we get our background checks. It is the Tristan Medical for the people that do have to go for physicals. It's the Advantage, which is your DOT. It's drug testing, but it's also the training that the supervisors have to receive every so many years. So this includes all of our contracted services that we pay. It's Voya, it's, you know, A to Z on that one. Training, I lessened it based off of the fact that scheduled right now, I believe Chris should be going in September to an HR training. And then I'm also trying to get into an HR training, but I, even with those two, we don't need the 3,000, so I, I reduced our budget. Postage, we went up a little bit. I found that we kind of creeped towards almost hitting it by the end, so I gave it a little bit of a buffer. Advertising, I went down, I think that the town's doing a great job right now. Advertising through the website and then social media, and we got the LinkedIn up and that's kind of linking us back in. So I don't see us needing that. I left the 5,000 just in case we wanted to use that money for the TA search. So the TA, the TA company will only do so many websites and then it's on us, so that's why I left that in there. But again, didn't need as much. Office supplies, it's kind of low, but I'm hoping we stay right around there. In-state travel, I left it in there. And the only reason is because with the schools, if you have to travel to the, the training, I just left it in in case. And then dues and subscriptions, that's actually our number based off of us being in the MMA and MMHR.
And just as a follow-up, under contracted services, you'll notice we spent a much larger amount in FY '23. That's where the classification and compensation study that was mentioned was paid 25,000 that year. That was for the study that the board's gonna be looking at soon.
Board has a need?
Maybe a general question, not so much for, for Lacey, but maybe for all the talks. Is there any reason why we carry a line item for office supplies for each department that's in the same building instead of? I mean, assuming that's like printer paper and ink and similar things.
Well, certainly there are shared services with copiers and printers and all sorts of things. But for our state reporting, we do have to report at a department level.
Oh, we do, okay.
Both salaries and expenses, so. But we do have certain shared expense, you know, particularly around copiers and.
Okay.
You know, large IT support.
That sort of thing, okay. Thank you.
Finance?
And then if I, if I may, just real quickly, in my budget right now, I do have enough money to support that Town Clerk position for FY '24. And then when FY '25 would hit, we would just change that accounting over so that she, she could actually have a person for the next couple of months if she hired somebody, we wouldn't have to wait till July.
Okay, well, that's with the.
Yeah, the only risk is if it's not funded by town meeting.
Right.
Right.
She's gonna have to do the transplant.
So you can work for three months and.
Yeah.
Two months. Well, we're close, but. So I wanted to just talk about some of your accomplishments and I'm gonna go back to the Town Clerk, because I missed that, my apologies. So the Employee Personnel Filing System was updated to increase accuracy and efficiencies. Streamlined the onboarding process by creating a workflow, covering all aspects of the integration. Created job opening tab on the town webpage to create more visibility for potential applicants. We like two clicks, this is a whole thing, two clicks. Created an FAQ for all employees regarding medical dental benefits to ensure up-to-date information is shared. And one thing I don't see in here is your monthly newsletter that goes out to the, to the crew. So I've been working hard on that and I know I look forward to, you know, seeing that too and what's happening and, you know, meeting some of the new staff that I haven't had a chance to meet in between, so I appreciate that.
Carry on, I just want to say thank you, I think it was, you know, really showed leadership to say, take my pool of money away and give it to the Town Clerk, she's been asking for help for years and years, so thank you for offering to do that. And I appreciate any time that you do meet with Lacey, she doesn't just give you the short-term answer, she gives you a long-term vision of like, here's my first step and here's your two, three, four, five, and that's where I want to get.
There's not many questions, it's all, you're very thorough, it's all laid out.
So I think that's a very nice proactive stance that is welcomed and I hope that that travels beyond your doors, so thank you.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna take a moment just to go through some of the Town Clerk accomplishments here. So successfully implemented the, the poll pads for the check-in process at elections and town meetings. Effectively worked with town boards and committees as well as the departments to ensure that the Conflict of Interest Law is implemented yearly and in full compliance of the law. So I do see that all, you know, as an elected official, I do see that coming over. And then enhanced the new towns code bylaws online. So if you haven't had a chance to check it out, it's pretty easy to, to get to some of the bylaw that you're looking for, where it was a little bit more difficult before. And also working, as Lil had mentioned, with King Information Systems for the record management needs. And I have been down in the basement and I, because I've actually looked for something that was, you know, years ago. And through Lil and her office, they were able to tell me exactly what box and, you know, where it was. So it was very impressive. Thank you, Lil, again. Okay, so.
So Veterans Services, page 53 in your binder, under the Human Services section of our budget.
Hello, Lil.
Hi. Evening. How's everybody doing? Yeah, really good.
Thank you.
Well, I was pretty much set forward, I went by what EVO S said they're gonna have as far as an increase as far as benefits.
Okay.
So I used that. And, you know, used all of last year's and tried to go up by that. One thing I did go and put in there was for the 2025 enhancements. And I don't know if anybody, you have that in front of you? But I did put in that my position should have somebody that's gonna be doing it for at least 24 hours. And I guess that wants to be revisited next year, but in any case. Lakeville is at the point right now that 375 more people will have to have a full-time veteran service officer, which is something I'm not interested in. And so I have my resignation here. And I'm gonna work until the first couple of days in August, you know, so that you have plenty of time to find a replacement. It's reluctant, I'm gonna have to do that, but I'm 71 years old, I've recently got married, I wanna spend more time with my wife. I wanna, you know, go and do a little bit more traveling. And working with the federal procedures that we have to go and deal with and the state procedures that we have to deal with now are getting ridiculous. It's, it's getting to the point where it's two or three times the time to do the same job that used to be three or four years ago.
Wow, how many hours do you work now?
15, well, I get paid for 15.
15, okay. So did I hear correctly that you have a letter of resignation there? Oh, I don't have to accept that right now.
Too bad.
So, but you're recommending that the hours for that position be increased.
Oh, yes, definitely.
To at least 24. But if, it could be filled with a full-time person, that would.
Well, you know, once, once the population hits 12,000, it's required, it's state law. I have that in here too.
Madam Chair, so just to clarify, so the state law says once the population hits 12,000 regardless of the number of veterans?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
You know, it doesn't mean that you, you could get, would get into a, work with another town, get into districts and all that sort of thing too, so. But it would have to be a full-time person. Quote-unquote. Which means it's the hours that the town hall is open, doesn't mean it's 40 hours, it could be 35 hours.
Okay, so definitely something we have to look out for.
You know, at least with maybe working with administration for like a transitional.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. No, that's why I'm.
In listening to, you know, what you have to say, I know that you, you see this, so. Well, well.
And it's, you know, it's hard to find veteran service officers. Not too many people want to do it.
Yeah.
Many reasons.
Again, Madam Chair, one of the requirements is you have to be a veteran, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you have to be certified. Well, all that stuff.
Yeah.
But so you could hire somebody that they would be, have, have to be certified in a certain amount of time.
I know you have absolutely served our community to the highest degree.
Well, it's nine plus years and, you know.
I mean, Madam Chair, I would, you know, I would like to say, and I know Maureen can attest to this, as can you. When we shut down, Will still found a way to meet with veterans, whether it was outside, on a picnic table or something. So, you know, that was very much appreciated by the veterans, by us, because, I mean, we owe, we owe these people, you know, really gratitude of, you know, our gratitude, thanks, appreciation, and we shouldn't, and you did, you went above and beyond to meet with them and make sure that they weren't waiting because of COVID. So I will always appreciate that.
It's not just the town.
Here, dear Leah, thank you for bringing that up. That's exactly the, the type of spirit that Will's always embodied. And he's always done beyond what's required to make sure that the veterans and people of Lakeville are served well and their voices are heard. So no amount of appreciation could be enough for the services that you've provided. And let me, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say congratulations on your recent wedding. Congratulations. I, I did not know. So good for you. But yes, you will be slowly missed and anything you can do to help us put a transition process in place and help guide us to having your replacement, that would be fantastic. And, and, and I'm, I'm very sorry to see you go.
I have been looking for a while for a replacement and it is difficult to help you. So, you know, when you get the new one, I will be helping. I will be moving to Lakeville myself from Middlebury, so.
No, we can get him for another office in the summer. I'm thinking right now.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just, Will, I wanted to say thank you. You speak to your services. You stepped up with a dear family friend of mine who suffers from TBI and PTSD. And I know having a conversation with her is very difficult. But you managed to get through it and put her in the right directions.
Yeah.
How much she followed through is hard to say.
I still hear from her.
Was it?
I still hear.
Do you still hear from her? She's, yeah, she's, yeah. And I, and I understand it, but you really, you know, worked hard for her and it really stepped up. And I, I'm going to say you went above and beyond with your, your station call. So thank you for all of your service from beginning to end. So thank you.
Madam Chair. As the others have said, you, you've always done a remarkable job. We've never had a problem with our veterans getting services through you. So thank you for all that. Thank you on the, the marriage. Sad to see you go. I did want to ask, I think it was last budget cycle, the select board kicked in some more money to make sure that you were caught up on grave markers and such.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I had a conversation with the company today and I will be getting an invoice from them. Well, I think you already have it, sending an email, so.
But you're, are you in good shape or do you?
I will have them by the time I need them.
Okay, excellent.
We wanted to make sure that there were enough to replace those that needed to be replaced and then include those that we didn't have.
Yeah.
The medals there.
Keep that going forward and keep them in good condition after all. They'll will be playing.
Excellent. Thank you.
Oh, that is another thing. There are locks on a few of the cemeteries now.
Locks or flocks? Locks, locks.
Locks, locks. So that, you know, you can't get in there.
Oh.
And it's not fun when you're 71 years old trying to jump over fences and straddling over them and all of that stuff. I could use a key.
I think we know somebody on the cemetery commission that we can unfortunately touch with, so. As far as the, your database that you work with, do you have everything that you need there that, working with your?
Okay, on the, on the federal side, their, the state is work, they're going to be going into a different system than what they were using. And they've been dragging their feet on this for two years. And so I have just been doing it through mail the past year. And it's, it's aggravating. It takes a little more time. They're supposed to have it straightened out sometime this year and that'll be great. That's the federal side dealing with that. The state side has the on-base system, which is ridiculous. They just keep on having one problem after another with it. They keep on trying to do enhancements. And they keep on failing and it's one of the issues where I, I think I mentioned about being two or three times longer on doing stuff and that's part of it. Another part of it is, is they're requiring more stuff that they just add on that they want for information. And if you're trying to get information out of somebody that's 95 years old, it's not always that easy for them to come up with stuff. I mean, it's not. Like, I get it done, but it's not easy.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, just, you know, trying to think, you know, down the road for the year, that if there are any changes at the state or the federal level that we, with what you currently have, you know, have the capacity to handle, you know, any of that. I know that we would just, you know, deal with it mid, midstream, but we could, I'd ask the question now while we're here.
Well, I, our IT is, you know, he's had to go and deal with this several different times. He doesn't like it either.
Well, I just know that you're, you know, with what you work with, it's very specific. It's very similar like the town clerk having to log on to a, you know, a different system, so.
Well, some of it's the same stuff, virtual gig, like. They have an on-base system that they use for doing the chapter 115 and all of that stuff, which can get pretty complicated sometimes, so.
Finance committee have anything for Will?
Okay.
Well, thank you very much, Will.
Anybody want this?
No.
Better trace it. I know nobody really wants it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel on aging, page 50.
Hello, Maureen.
Hello. How are you?
All righty, so we're on page 50. Just going to go through real quick what my staff consists of, myself. Two full-time employees, Cheryl, the administrative assistant, and Victoria, who's the new full-time clerk. We have three part-time van drivers and we share a part-time outreach worker. I just want to mention that we have two fabulous volunteer shine counselors and I want to mention that because the service they provide to the seniors is remarkable. So I know they're not paid employees, but I just wanted to mention them. All right, if you go to the proposed budget page, our expense line item is level funded this year. No, no changes there. Looking at the salaries, what you see, salary increases that are shown are contractual with step raises or cola raises. I had handed out packets prior to the meeting today. I don't know if you want me to redo it quick, quickly. I just wanted you guys to have it in front of you instead of me just rambling on. You'd have something to look at. Do you want me to go through it?
No, I think it's important if you do go through while you're here.
Okay.
So we're hearing it with the finance.
Sure, okay. Um, so the first page, so page one is my justification for my enhancement request for Cheryl, who's the administrative assistant. Just explaining, I'm requesting a level increase for the COA administrative assistant from a level two step six to a level one step five on the town class and comp plan. This would give Cheryl, if she were to go to level one step five, the increase allows her another year with a step raise. So she wouldn't be at the top of her pay. Cheryl's been the clerk at the COA for four years and was upgraded to the position of administrative assistant in 2022. She's been at top pay under the current pay scale for the past two years. I'd like to say Cheryl goes above and beyond in this position and has kept the office running smoothly during our intermittent staffing shortages. She was also instrumental in training both of our new office clerks. I know I said we have one, but we had one and she left and then we had to rehire. So within a year, she trained two full-time office books. In 2023, Cheryl also attended fuel assistance training in order to assist seniors with fuel assistance until we filled the outreach worker position. Cheryl is currently responsible for monthly scheduling of 18 delivery driver volunteers and 10 packager volunteers. This is to do with our Meals on Wheels program. This is a brand-new process. Well, I say new, it's a new process to the position having started the same month that she was appointed as the interim AA position. Along with this new procedure is also end-of-month reports to OCES and to the RSVP program for proper documentation and mileage reimbursement. Cheryl is consistent and always files required documents accurately and on time. When I'm out of the office, she is competent and capable of handling any issues that may arise as well as our regularly daily routine. I have full confidence in Cheryl during any of my absences. It is for this reasons and more, I hope you'll take into consideration when discussing my level increase request for Cheryl. And on page two is the actual enhancement form. The first line shows the proposed enhancement request to the level one step five. The second line is the current FY, proposed FY25 salary and it gives the total difference at the bottom, the 1626. And Lorraine, did you want me to just continue? And okay, perfect.
Will, anybody just jump in if you have any questions?
Okay, the page.
We do have a question.
Madam Chair, does, does Lacey have this?
Uh, yes, she does.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Page three is justification for my enhancement request. Since being appointed as your COA director, I have successfully completed my certificate in gerontology through Allegra Learning Solutions. Most recently, I received my certificate in volunteer engagement in the Aging Network through BU CATER. And I am currently enrolled in the MCOA Program Planning Certificate also through BU CATER. I have applied to and was accepted by MCOA to begin my COA Director's Certification Course. This is a two-year course program beginning in FY25. I currently serve on several boards and committees, most of which meet monthly. COA feasibility, emergency planning, GATRA advisory, OCES Board of Directors, MCOA Board of Directors, Old Colony Planning Council, AAA, and the Old Colony Regional Committee. I'm responsible not only for the COA staff, but also the GATRA van in the senior center building itself, both inside and out. This year, I have proactively worked with COA staff and the facilities department on effective ways to save on heat and electricity. Even with extra night meetings, I am hopeful that we'll be able to save a little bit in the line items. I am also working with the facilities department to be proactive in anything I see that may become an issue in the future. Before it does, being proactive is, in this way, also helps to cut costs in the future. I proceeded with a COA Director Wage Study using seven of the 10 towns from the GOV HR Wage and Classification Study, which was presented to us in August of 2023. And on page five, a comparison of these seven towns with the average is what is on page five. I'll go over that if you want when I'm finished. If you look at page six in my packet, this explains where the funds for these two requests would come from at no additional cost to the town and not affecting my bottom line. I just want to say, I've been working at the senior center for eight years now. May will be two years since I was appointed as the interim and the COA director. I have enjoyed every minute, every minute of it. Love my job, the employees, especially my seniors. I give my all every day, put my whole heart into it. I'm not resigning. I'm sorry, that was a shocker. I just hope you take all this into consideration, all elements of why I have requested these raises, raises for Cheryl and myself and where the funds will come from that will not adversely affect the COA or the town's bottom line. And page four is just my enhancement request form. And then those five and six, and I'll take any questions. Sorry, that was long.
No, appreciate it because we all needed to hear. This is, this is your opportunity to talk about your department and, you know, kind of where you're looking to go. So now I, again, as I've mentioned, it's not easy to advocate, you know.
No, it's not. It works as heck, I'll tell you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So just like the town clerk's position, there hasn't been a change really. And, you know, we had moved Laurie to the interim position and then, you know, so as we've hired new people, it's obvious that, you know, those are the two salaries that are sort of lagging behind. So, you know, I don't, I know this one here, she's found the money, but I think we need to talk about.
I think there's definitely a need for a more in-depth conversation.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Similar to what Leah said, I, I think that Director Fahey, for lack of better words, was a bit of a victim over the, the previous director's salary being so low and then coming into that interim and getting the position. It was really never revisited as far as I understand.
Right.
And I think that definitely is one that needs to be looked at and figured out one way or another, similar to the clerk's position.
And I agree, Brian. The previous director was offered the position and was given a $5,000 increase a couple of years later. And this is still how low it is even with that enhancement in the. So I, yeah.
I just have to stop real quick. Maureen, just for the record, there were a couple of handouts that were given to us this evening. So if you wouldn't, through the TA's office, just maybe send them.
Do that tomorrow.
So you will have those.
Thank you so much.
And I'm running blind right now on those, but.
I do have a follow-up question, if I may. So I know, I appreciate that you're trying to show us where there'd be no, you know, hurt to the bottom line. But on the outreach, you know, we went from actuals of $9, 965. Where are we trending on that for 2024? Because I see in your later page that that was funded with a grant.
Right.
So is that grant money gone?
Nope. So the, in the previous years, the grant money was used up. This year, I requested extra funds. And then because the previous outreach worker retired and then we hired new, we're actually not even going to go through those grant funds this year. Todd, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, so we had put this in the budget a few years ago because we were, at the time, we're at risk of not having the grant renewed.
Okay.
But most of the outreach costs are funded through this state grant and we're fairly secure for next year.
We are fairly secure.
So there's, there's not the need for the number that's currently in here.
So I think my, my point being, while I respect that might not be a hit this year if that grant runs out or stops being funded at the state level, which they've never done before.
Yeah, no.
We're just something to keep in mind.
We have enjoyed that grant for several years now.
Let's say six, six or seven.
Nice.
So it's a recurring program.
And the process has changed. It used to go through EOEA and now the grant process goes through MCOA. And I file as a consortium, so we share the outreach worker with Berkeley. And it was explained to me that consortiums usually get the grant fees because they're sharing with another town. So as long as I. So as long as I stay with Berkeley and I file for the two towns, there shouldn't be a problem with receiving the grant funding.
That's good to know. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I know the state's always been very um, you know, interested in having like regionalization, you know, type efforts, you know, try to combine the resources.
I can add a question on that grant. So number one, it's not a guarantee going forward, but at least for another year, we know it's safe. Are we allowed to reallocate those funds to cover other salaries, though? And the grants that they have to continually cover the outreach?
No, so this grant, what happens is they give me a budget in case we don't get the grant. But the funds are reimbursed. So quarterly, I do um, I submit paperwork and it's reimbursed back to the town. Am I explaining that correctly?
So the grant is very restrictive. In other words, Laurie couldn't use it for something other than outreach. Um, but the, the town funding, that town meeting is approved at a bottom line.
So you're moving the out, the outreach funding the town already gives to somewhere else?
And then moving the outreach. That's what she's proposing.
That's what she's proposing, yes.
Yep.
So you're not touching the grant money because you can't.
Right.
Right, correct.
Correct.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to add that just in five minutes, we've seen how much record-keeping she does of all the grants and the amounts of money. And I've been working with Laurie very closely and Bob when we're talking about, because we do have the pantry, food pantry money in the ARPA. Um, and, you know, she's identified sources that I didn't even know, you know, were around, were available to, for. And she keeps track of all that stuff, too, so I'm glad you do, but.
Thank you.
Um, at one time, we um, we're trying to put together just kind of a blanket, you know, where the grants that we receive, you know, as a community. But there are just so many and it changes every year. There might be new other competitive grants that we might be eligible for this year that we weren't last year and.
Yeah, the um, the one, could you mention the one, Laurie, that you get per senior, which is a consistent?
So that's formula grant funding through the state. Um, in previous years, it was $12 per senior. And this year, um, we received $14 per senior. And they are um in talks right now and trying to get that up to $15 per senior, so.
So that's just another one. That one's pretty, that's not like a grant application, that's.
It's some, yes, it's a little more restrictive on how we use it. It has to benefit the seniors, um, whether it be programming or um entertainment or, you know, that type of thing. It has to directly benefit the seniors.
And that's a report that you do quarterly or annually?
Annually.
Nearly.
Yeah, that's a yearly report. Todd's involved in that, too.
Okay.
Question for probably yourself and the Town Minister, interim Town Minister. Do we anticipate that we, we're going to have an opportunity to do the class and comp discussion before?
Yes.
All the budget books have to go for town meeting? Because this is, make one of these, we've already got three enhancements being asked.
That is correct.
And there may be department heads that say, well, we were told not to do any enhancements this year. Now I see they're being asked, so night two, we'll probably get some more, night three, we'll probably get some more. I would just like to sit and have all of those discussions with the class and comp before we send out the paperwork. I know it's busy, but.
No, that, that's what we had talked about. It, the timing is now for having that conversation.
Great.
But we, we did encourage enhancements. We just told folks in the fall that it's a very tight, appears to be a very tight year coming up.
Okay.
But please take this opportunity with the board to share, you know, what you'd like.
Okay.
That we may not be able to work in. We did encourage.
Yes. Yeah, on the same, what Todd just said, we had a department head meeting several weeks ago. I told all the department heads to come forward and present your budget, as well as advocate for your department and present your enhancements. So I'm glad to see so far everyone is joining.
Yeah, the encouragement helped.
And I'm sure.
You've been empowered.
Madam Chair, uh, just to follow up with what uh member Fabian said. She said we've been working with Laurie on the uh food pantry addition. And I know the Select Board approved $250,000 through ARPA.
Thank you.
I have mentioned in the past that Laurie has some grant money and some earmarks. So could you tell us now what those are?
I can tell you. I can't tell you the bottom lines. I will try my best. So um, we do have um LaBaron funds. Um, so we'll be able to use the LaBaron funds to go towards that because we had a earmark grant um that we were able to use to pay for the feasibility study instead of the monies that were voted on at town meeting from the LaBaron. So that money was transferred back to the LaBaron account. So we do have $100,000 in that that we can also use towards um the food pantry, sorry. Um, and then formula grants money, if we use it specifically, we can use that as long as it goes to benefit the seniors in town. And I think a food pantry would absolutely benefit the seniors. And I carried over a great deal from last year, so I think we'd have, I'm not going to throw out numbers because I don't know the exact right now, but I think we'd have plenty to construct and furnish um a food pantry. And then. We do not. So the, the previous food pantry was consolidated in the custodial closet and, which is in the middle of our great room. So two problems with that, um, it's in the custodial closet was one problem. And the other one was it was in the middle of the great room, so there was no privacy because those are the two rooms that get used the most. Um, my hopes, I was talking with Leah about this, is the door on the outside of the food pantry will be locked and there'll be, there are doorbell that goes to our office or they make appointments, so there'll only be one person in at a time. They'll be able to shop on shelves. We'll hopefully, um, I already spoke with the Friends of the Lakeville Council on Aging. They're willing to help us supply like a fridge and freezer if that's needed. Um, so they'll just have the ability to shop privately and they'll be able to exit to the parking lot and not have to come through the main room.
Yeah, and you know, it's, it's tough. When you spend a lot of time there, people are very proud. And, you know, um, we really need to respect everyone's dignity. And I want people to come forward. I think all of us want that, if they're struggling.
Yep, and we'll be able to, um, before COVID and before our brown bag was discontinued, we had forty-two recipients of the brown bag. Um, and once it was discontinued, we gave them other options of different food pantries to go to. One of them, I believe you were speaking about last night, and then there was also uh Middleborough Food Pantry. So with this dedicated food pantry room, we'd also be able to start our um brown bag program back up again once a month. And you'll be able to come privately and just grab their bag of food and go. So that's another bonus for that.
Funded primarily from grants and donations?
Uh, which?
The food pantry?
Um, so I applied for ARPA funding, so the primary source of it.
Construction.
The inside.
Right, that's the facilities, right. But the, the food itself is.
We get so many donations. Um, the Lions Club gives us gift cards to grocery stores to give out or to use to, to fill our food pantry. Our town hall around the holidays, they always do a, a drive um that we give out to needy or seniors that we feel may need the assistance. So um, I was talking with um a woman today that works at one of the other food pantries and she's already gung-ho. She's like, oh, I'll explain to you how we do these food drives. We can do this and that, and we're going to get the friends involved. So we've already got some great ideas going. Right now, what we do when food's donated, we have um a, a lodger, a rolling cart, and we put all the free food on that. And on Fridays, when we have our cafe, it's usually completely cleaned out by the end of the day. Um, because again, we just don't want to have folks going into the custodial closet. Anybody else from the floor? My name's, oh.
We kind of got off track. Did we want to come back to Cheryl on that request? On the step increase? Just, do we need to talk about that at a future meeting or?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we reminded ourselves because we got off on yourself.
I know, not just me. No, this is definitely for Cheryl.
That would be an action item.
She, she came into that position. I was at top pay at that position, so same thing. When she transitioned over into the interim, she just went over at my existing top pay at that position. And she's taken on a lot more responsibility, just the way things have changed.
I just wanted to talk about um the VA accomplishments and um Council on Aging. So there's, for the VA, continued working with the new on-base system uh for state claims. And as, you know, Will had mentioned, that there's been some bumps in the road there. But um, also, the local Veterans Agent is responsible for administering the Commonwealth um of Massachusetts Financial Aid Program, which makes payments to two hundred and sixteen unique veterans and beneficiary, beneficiaries in Lakeville um at a combined value of about $300,558 every month. So substantial. Senior Center, uh, they brought significant staffing changes on the Council on Aging, including the replacement of the department's long-term outreach worker, as Laurie indicated, and then the new SHINE volunteers. Uh, the Friends of the Lake, Lakeville Council on Aging, they've raised um over $17,500 to support the work of the Council on Aging and the seniors in Lakeville. Um, and they continue to work uh to generate, you know, other revenue streams there as well. Uh, in FY twenty-three, the seniors participated in eight day trips totaling about $1,817 in um commission for the uh COA. Also, other, you know, grants that were applied for here. Let's see, seven um Lakeville Cultural Council Grants um awarded totaling $2,175. The other grants here, the Service Initiative Grant through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elders Affair uh for outreach workers. And then we have other grants from Senator Roderick's Community Empowerment Fund uh for the purchase and construct of a carport for the COA in GATRA Van. And received $10,000 grant through the Senator Roderick's Community Empowerment Fund to cover the cost of thirty-six seniors to receive basic computer skills. And there's no basic computer skills these days. It is, you are in computer skills. Um, if you know how to turn it on, you are a pro. A knowledge at no cost to them or to the COA. Uh, the grant includes the cost of the class instructor, as well as the procurement of six laptops for the COA's permanent use. So those are pretty significant um accomplishments for both areas, so. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, you guys.
Appreciate it.
Uh, next we have uh the Fire Department, page thirty-three in the Public Safety section of the budget.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, thank you. So this is my sixth budget presentation since being appointed as Fire Chief. Um, and they get more and more enjoyable every year. My salary and wages side of the budget represents just over ninety percent of my budget, which is typical each year, it kind of varies a little bit. Generally, what happens is um we have some contractual obligations and the non-union group raises that are decided upon. And that's usually the driver of the changes in my budget. When uh, when salary and, and wages change, uh whatever the cause of the reason, there's a corresponding change to overtime rates and bonuses and things like that. Generally, what happens is the, the, the boat, the, the, the history is that the bonus, the uh budget that's submitted reflects the, the direct changes. And sometimes we slide into trouble keeping up with some of the overtime lines. And that's when I, I make the walk down the hallway to Todd and ask for help. And we make some, it's usually corrected in program enhancements. That's kind of historically how we've done it. Um, and that's how we've kept pace with the salary side of, of our budget. Would you say that was accurate?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, this past year, the Select Board was um incredibly supportive of our mission needs and provided for additional positions uh using ARPA funding. So this budget um is, is destined to be different. This budget, uh, it, it becomes a budget that is uh intended to be analytical in nature. So what I took out of that, and I tend to take out of, take, you know, I hear what I, what I, what I really want to hear. Uh, but what my takeaway from, from that ARPA discussion was that I wanted to right-size our budget. Um, you guys are aware, we made a, a joke earlier in the evening about transfers to cover overtime and things like that. My goal is to, to right-size my budget and to make it realistic and, and to be, to have a predictable number for the town to work off of. The, the drivers of my budget, it's kind of threefold. I, uh, call volume is, is the number one driver. I can't stack calls, I can't triage calls. I'm, I'm obligated to respond to every call that comes in the door. And if I have simultaneous calls, that, that causes problems, that causes overtime. I have staffing, uh, turnover, things like that, those are drivers for, for overtime expense. So there's things that are, that are beyond my control. One of the, the things that you gave me control of was the ability to create a minimum man, a manning policy that saves overtime. The sample size is extremely small. And I'm, I'm kind of caught in limbo where I don't really have a sample size that would allow me to make a, an educated guess, you know. I guess there's a, there's a saying in, in public administration, you can't, you can't manage what you, what you don't measure. And we don't have a sample size that's, that's measurable yet or, or now the sample size is too small to measure. So I, I don't know what the savings are going to be. And it's, and I'm caught in this limbo situation where it's very difficult for me to, to make budget changes on a, on a, on a three-month sample size under our new staffing model. Uh, it's, it's extremely difficult. And, and so, you know, early, early reviews are, are positive. Um, we're seeing uh reductions in, in, in uh overtime coverage for holiday and callback uh compared to the same period last year. But there's so many variables in our, that affect our bottom line in this fire department. You know, if we have an injury, a long-term injury, if we have somebody resign, all that savings disappears and evaporates. So what I'm asking for from the board is, is, you know, a little bit of, of patience. And what I would provide to you is my word and my, I don't even have to, I, I, I don't even want to say it is my, I want to share with you my mentality. I don't spend to the budget. I've never spent, spent to the budget. I always spend to mission. I've expended the money required to, to protect lives and, and save property. And if it turns out that I can be in a position where I have a surplus at the end of the year, I will be very proud of that surplus and I'll work very hard to, to provide that surplus. But I, I just don't have enough data to support that. And, and as you guys, the, the senior member of the, the Select Board can tell you, I'm very data-driven. I've always tried to support my, my initiatives with data. And it's very uncomfortable for me to present a, a budget with certainty without data. And that's kind of, that's where the best description of where I am right now. I'm in limbo. And, and what I really am requesting, you know, the narrative that, that goes along with this budget is I'm asking for your patience for a good data set and, and, and a good um, a good situational awareness, so we can really make, write a, a decent budget for this town and something that's predictable and something that's realistic and meets the needs of the town. I hope that makes sense.
Madam Chair, I have a few questions for Chief O'Brien. Um, Chief, it's Maureen on, on Zoom.
Hi, Maureen.
On Zoom, hi. Um, a couple of questions. As you alluded to, uh, overtime has always been a little bit of a black hole in, in the budget as it is dictated by necessity rather than something you're planning on. When you presented to the Select Board, I want to say two months ago, three months ago, um, about the safer grant and adding more staffing on, one of the things that you had talked about, we just laid it out uh in, in the meeting, is the overtime and that this would have a, a mitigating effect on the overtime. Uh, the one thing I'm not clear on, on the overtime and mitigation is, did you have a new policy put into place where you were not replacing the overtime, the new staffing um calls, like you weren't replacing them? Because that's the only thing I can think of that policy-wise would actually create the change that you're looking to see. Because otherwise, statistically and mathematically, the probability of someone being out is just as great at, you know, four shifts as it is at three shifts. Um, you know, so I was just looking to see what procedurally you've put into place in order to ensure that you're able to deliver on, you know, what we're, we're asking for with adding those additional positions on.
Now, I thank you for that question because it allows me to kind of explain that a little bit better. So um, in the past, up, up to this point, including today, we've maintained three people on duty. So prior to the, the addition of the four positions, alls we had on duty were, were three firefighters. So anytime anybody was absent for any reason, it caused the town overtime to replace them. And the driver on the. And the driver on the three-person staffing was that the, that just, you know, when you're running eight, nine, ten calls a day, none of our off-duty people can reset or recuperate, they're constantly coming back to work, and it's usually the, the very few same people all the time. And so with the change in the staffing policy is, is with four people on, the minimum's still three, and so not every vacation day or sick leave day or injury corresponds with, with, with an overtime payment, and, and that's where the savings is. So early indications are showing in the, in the high thirty percent reduction, but we know that there's so many other variables that can, that can sneak up on us. Additional employees mean additional holiday benefits, the, you know, these contractual obligations, so I'm confident that this is going to be a, a net, it's not going to be a net savings, but there's going to be corresponding savings to the town that will help offset the salary expenses related to the new positions. What those corresponding savings, it's, it's just a guess right now, and it's very uncomfortable for me to make that guess and be, be wrong, and, and, and I guess if, what I'm asking for is, is just a little bit of patience to be analytical and to get it right.
Right, Chief, so you're, I just wanted to clarify from my notes, you're stating that it is the policy now only to replace three and not the fourth when there is four on duty?
That's accurate.
That's helpful, thank you.
Did you have anything else, Maureen?
No, that wasn't the crux of what I was looking for, because throughout the, the other conversations, I don't think we really delved into, into the, the how that it was going to be achieved, and if there's a policy in place, it's much more likely to be closer to those goals than it would be without it.
Right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So the Chief has always done a very good job of alerting the Select Board to, you know, big incidents in town. We don't get a notice on every call, but we do, especially if they have to leave town to go provide mutual aid, so I've been doing this for, starting my, started my sixth year for the first time in thinking about the four-person team shift. The fact that the fire didn't spread last weekend to the actual duplex unit has a, a savings associated with it that I feel I can't ignore either, and I grew up in Brockton and saw three deckers and two deckers go up all the time, but as a Select Board member, it's quite a responsibility to know that you can provide that kind of response. And, you know, prior to that, we've always had a call, and I believe in the call system, and they, you know, but at least when you get to a fire and you're attacking it with four people, hands-on deck, I know we are all on, on, the responsibility is on all of us to try to make sure we can fund these positions going forward after the SAFRA grant or, you know, however it all works out, but I still am happy that we're doing it, and I know that's, you know.
Operationally, it's, I mean, we're discussing dollars and cents.
I think about the dollars every day.
Yeah, operationally, it's been huge.
Yeah, but, and I, I really hope we get to the point where we do see that type of savings, you know, and I wonder too about some of these other simultaneous calls, I know it says right here you've had three hundred and fifty simultaneous, I mean, that's simultaneous, that's three people. I know I had my own incident when we only had three people on and two people went to the hospital, and I think I told the story last year, I said to the remaining person, well, what do you do now? Well, now I got to go call someone in because I'm there by myself pretty much, so.
Only one mutually aid ambulance today, and we've had, we had three calls at the same time, so it's, it happens almost on a daily basis, it's just, it's, there's no rhyme or reason to it.
Yeah.
And it's, it's difficult to, it's not reasonable to staff to that level, to be prepared for three simultaneous calls, but right now, we're, we're staffed to handling two basic calls at the same, at the same time or one significant call, and, and that's a huge upgrade for us, and, and we do it without delay, which is, which is extremely beneficial to the public safety.
As far as the actual budget, maybe Todd knows, maybe Bob knows, we got opioid settlement money, correct?
Yes. Yeah, Bob did report that to the board.
That's what I thought, so, because there is an increase in EMS supplies, I'm not sure what makes that up, but I remember when we were discussing it with the lawyers, Maureen, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I said something like, okay, so these billion-dollar lawsuits and we're getting a whopping ten thousand?
Around ten thousand.
Ten thousand annually, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, does some of that go, because of the opioid?
Don't worry, the lawyers, the lawyers got plenty, so I won't say that.
Yeah, yes, because of the opioid crisis, it was, you know, our thought process instinctively was, well, is that enough to even keep Narcan on the ambulance for, you know, for that amount of time? So I didn't know if that money is being applied anywhere or if we just have it somewhere else.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So I did meet with Chief Perkins, Chief O'Brien, and Health Agent Mr. Cullen, and we had a nice discussion. Chief O'Brien did come forth with a plan to expend at least five or six thousand out of the ten, you may want to elaborate, but the goal is to use some of that money prior to June thirtieth, if not all go into the general fund as it has in the past. I don't know if you want to elaborate?
There's a medication that's been added to our protocol, basically, when we revive somebody with Narcan, they are immediately going from a state of euphoria or high or unresponsive to a state of going through withdrawals, and, and it's a horrible, horrible, I, I don't know firsthand, but I can imagine it's a horrible feeling, and you're not going to make a sound decision if you're, if you're, well, you're not going to advocate for yourself in that state of mind. The only thing that you want to do is get high again, and you're in extreme withdrawal. So we have a medication that actually takes away the, the withdrawal symptoms and allows them clarity of mind for a few minutes, so they're more likely to, to accept treatment and seek, and get transport. So a lot of times now, with the strength of the opiates out there, we're responding back for the same overdose. We revive them, we come back to the station, we have to go back again a few hours later when Narcan wears off, and they've gone back into another overdose. So this drug is, comes with a cost, it's expensive, and my proposal would pay for the, the addition of that drug onto, onto the ambulances, so we can basically help these people get treatment. The other thing that we, the other program that I wanted to fund through that, that money, that allotment, was leave behind Narcan. So another thing too is, is when we leave the scene, once we make somebody alert and oriented, they, they are able to answer all our questions appropriately, we're no longer able to transport them against their will, they are legally able to deny us, you know, the authority to treat them. So we know they're gonna, we know they're gonna slide back, so we're able to hand off to whoever's living with them or staying with them, whoever their caretaker is, Narcan, and there's no, you know, there's no expense to them, we'll, we'll, you know, through this, this funding, we'll be able to, to take on that expense. So I, to me, those are two good, you know, life-saving worthwhile programs, and we can do it within the miniscule amount of money that the, they're providing us in the settlement.
Okay. You want, yeah, I have to digest that.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Chief, if I, if I may, Narcan is amazing and absolutely should be left behind, it's someone who lost their own to an overdose, Narcan would have saved his life, but not having it in the, in the presence is.
It's controversial.
It is, but it saves lives, I also understand from my knowledge of Narcan, as soon as they're done, first thing I want to do is go get high immediately. What is that stabilization drug, I haven't heard of it yet?
I'd have to text a friend, I can't remember the name, and even if I do, the name would probably mispronounce it, it's not going to be fun of later on.
So it is something fairly new, because I've never heard of it.
Yeah, it's.
And that's actually phenomenal.
It's an optional, it's an optional drug that was added to our EMS protocols, and it's a local, a local opt-in, so we would basically have to get approval or our local medical, medical director, our doctor, I'm more in hospital, they sign off on it, we would have to purchase the medication from their, from their pharmacy, and then we would have to do in-service training and, and get everybody up to speed on it.
Just one more step to stay alive.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because there are people that are overdosing on, on opioids and you know they take opioids, so that's a position which you, that's the millionaires.
Thank you. I still can't pronounce it.
You can use phonics, right?
But it's got the proposal there, what is it, five thousand dollars?
Yeah, five thousand dollars, five thousand forty-six dollars forty-two cents is the total cost of the two programs that I'd like to institute, and basically, the Narcan's not an injectable, it's a, it's a nasal, nasal administration, so it's very easy to administer, but it's, it's life-saving programs. There's another, there's like, people think of, of people that, you know, the, it's not just people who are going through rough times, it's not like you, you pictured the street junkie and people overdosing, it's very, it's, it's, it goes, it cuts across like community lines, it's, it's very average people and people of different economic means, it's, it's the elderly people who mistakenly take their, their pain meds multiple times due to dementia. I've given Narcan personally to an eighty-year-old woman and, and be able to revive her, we were thought, we thought she was having a stroke, and, and I was looking at her med list, and I'm like, oh, this might be worth a shot, woke her right up. So it's, I think if you get, you get these preconceived notions of who's overdosing, and I, I think it doesn't deserve us to, to some people's attitudes towards these programs and stuff, that makes sense.
I'll forward that email to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And on that, Madam Chair, and I know this is a budget meeting, not, you know, a substance abuse meeting, but no, I don't think there's too many people out there that say, hey, I want to be a drug addict when I grow up. So it's something that happens in people's lives, and, you know, I think we had talked a little bit too about trying to do a, you know, public service announcement or something, but, you know, I'm really glad to know that you're talking about the use of that miniscule, I will use your word, Chief.
I appreciate that, that outreach and the, to, to engage the, the Chiefs and, and Ed Col, and it was, it was a good opportunity for me to, to champion some programs.
Thank you.
Can someone explain line item five-one-five-five-zero-zero? I think it's contract specialization, but I don't know what PAYART twenty-two is.
So, uh, contract specialization is basically a EMT bonus, so when the union negotiates the compensation, they, they use comparable fire departments, and basically, it's a common practice for them to be indirectly compensated for their level of medical training. So they have two, they have three different levels of medical training that they are compensated at, one is EMT basic, and I think the, I can't remember off the top, but the contract calls for a bonus of around five thousand, I think it's fifty-five hundred, and then paramedic is around twelve thousand dollars, which is comparable to, to, to communities around us, we've, the Select Board has made significant improvements on, on these line items to make us compatible for recruitment and retention, which has historically been a problem for Lakeville. And then the third category at the end of it is community paramedicine, which is a special certification above and, and beyond, and that, those paramedics can actually go in and assist with people's medication programs, they can look over their prescriptions and things like that, they can do health screenings, and, and so when we go into like the COA, we go to the COA every other Friday, and we do health screenings with our seniors, and we did one just the other night at LeBaron Apartments, the reason we're able to do that is because we have a community paramedicine on the, on the payroll, we just need one, and that person, I think he really, he receives an extra two thousand dollars in his, his EMT bonus stipend, but that's what the specialization is, is just an EMT bonus.
Does this have a cap or does it go up indefinitely?
So when, when it's based on base pay, so if you give them a three percent base of pay, there's a corresponding change to that specialization. So for budgeting purposes, all our, our paramedics, all our employees are required to get, become paramedics, our goal is to hire paramedics, there's just so few paramedics out there that we end up hiring paramedics too.
Right.
So, but, so it's very, it's, it's kind of this liquid, very, so we try and budget for worst-case scenario, financial-wise, we, we budget for everybody getting their paramedic within the budget cycle, sometimes that happens and sometimes it doesn't.
So my question here is, it's gone up about twenty thousand dollars every year, is that going to continue every year from now on?
Or it depends on what the pay raises, pays is strictly off the pay raise, and right now, this doesn't capture the four new employees, it just captures the, the employees that are being paid out of the budget, not out of the ARPA. So when that was, that, when those employees would be brought in, is that, that's accurate? Okay, I, excuse my man, I check for accuracy when I judge, speak, there would be an adjustment for that as well, and, and hoping there would be, there's an offset there to help defray the cost of that.
Okay, and then where you, you were talking about community paramedicine, if the individual who's doing the community paramedicine makes an incorrect recommendation or makes a mistake and the patient passes, what's the liability like on that for the town or is it on the Fire Department?
So with, uh, community paramedicine doesn't make decisions about taking medications or what medications to take, he doesn't write scripts, or she doesn't write scripts, what she does is she kind of goes into a house, vital signs, assessment of, you know, using cardiac monitors, all the things that they do now, currently, and they make recommendations to the patient about seeking additional care for this, and you may want to ask your doctor about this, and your blood pressure's a little bit high, and maybe you should seek, you know, you know, get an appointment for this, it's, it's basically they're an advocate, and so they're not amending the care, they're not changing what the patients treated by their doctor, they're basically discovering problems that before, when they're still small, and they, they basically, it's a screening, basically you're picking up on potential problems and you're, you're directing to get proper help before it becomes a huge problem. So instead of an ambulance ride to the hospital, it might be a car ride to the doctor's office, and the idea behind a community paramedicine program, or MIH it's called, Mobile Integrated Health, is to lower hospital emissions through early screening, low, and, and basically, it's a cost-cutting measure, like you, basically, the, it's, it's what the Fire Department and EMS is going to become, we're going to become the eyes and ears for, for, for hospitals, we're going to do telemedicine in the house, this is what we're evolving into. It's going to be less about loading people in ambulances and driving to the hospital, it's going to be about keeping them out of the hospital and providing more hands-on care in, in people's homes.
Are you currently working with any hospitals or any links to help fund that position?
We, what's the, the, that particular position, no, but what the, what the, the system lacks right now is the ability to bill for it, there's no revenue offset to, to fund the program, so the programs are kind of, currently, some programs that are out there operate off of ARPA funding, temporary sources of revenue. What's missing from this whole program is, is a revenue source, the ability to bill for it, and once we have the ability to bill for it, you'll see the programs take off. I did, I was in a pilot program, I administered a pilot program about eight years ago, where a hospital shared their, their estimated cost savings back to the department to fund our, our outreach program. So we had community paramedicine, and St. Anne's Hospital basically provided payments back to the Fire Department, and it was a percentage of their estimated savings based on our efforts, and so that's another funding line.
I was thinking on the same lines myself that, okay, so this is, you know, it's a shift.
Yeah.
But there has to be some.
There has to be a revenue, yeah, we're saving that money, basically, and we're taking on more burden, more expense, so there has to be a corresponding.
Right, but it's, Madam Chair, it's not always optional for the Fire Department, like, to do it, because people will walk in, I've seen people walk into the Fire Department with all their medicines and just put them on the counter right there at the window and say, I don't know what to do here, so.
It's a slippery slope, the one improvement that we have, when we only have one community paramedic on the, on the department, is now that we, we can do that with, with minimal liability because we have that certification, and before, we would kind of do it on the down-low, like, hey, this is kind of, this looks a little hokey.
So to echo off Brenna's question, liability-wise, there still has to be some liability, I'm assuming, so insurance, is there additional insurance we have to carry in order to cover?
No, it's, as, as long as it's within our scope of care, so meaning like, if I gave somebody advice on their medications and, and their, their procedures and their general medical care, like, there's liability there because I'm not trained to do it, but the person that is trained to do it and the person that, that administers the program, it is captured within his license, it is captured within our, our normal indemnification, I guess would be the proper, proper terminology, there hasn't really been any corresponding changes in any of that. The key is to work within our scope of practice, the, one of the significant improvements that we made in the department in the last five years is we have a vigorous QA-QI program, quality control program. Every single one of our cases, every patient contact is, is scrutinized and there's, uh, feedback and, and the providers are coached. So that's critical to, to, to basically finding problems, uh, discovering trends, uh, if we're going in the wrong direction, discovering positive, uh, trends, things that we're doing really well and basically promoting those, those improvements to, throughout the department. We, we, we almost contracted those services out or I lobbied for it early on. Um, but we do it in-house. Uh, our, my deputy takes on the burden of, of all that and, uh, she does a great job. And it even has a revenue, a corresponding impact on our, on our revenue, uh, because proper documentation leads to, uh, improved billing. And so there's, there's, there's multiple, uh, benefits to, to doing business the way we're doing it right now.
Brian, you said you had something.
Yep, yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I want to ask a quick question to Todd, if I may. So, and, and Chief knows where I'm going to go here. On the overtime line, it says. Yep, no, no, no. I just want to, you'll, you'll tell me why and it'll make sense. So in the original budget for twenty twenty-four, overtime says one fifty, but in our budget-to-date report, it says it was a hundred and ten. And then we later on had a forty thousand dollar transfer. So should we be seeing one-ten there or one-fifty there?
There was a, an amendment to the budget in the fall town meeting.
It was that town meeting in the fall. So the spring budget was one-ten.
Right.
And later we made it.
And when we set our tax rate after the fall town meeting, that's when we say this is our original budget.
Okay.
So any amendments, you know, as you know, periodically we have some budget that requires correction.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes it's the school assessments got voted lower. And then we'll use those funds for something like fire overtime. So at, at that point, after we, after our fall town meeting and when we set the tax rate, that's when we establish what the original budget is of the community.
Okay, alright. So don't go by the original, original budget. Go by the fall.
Don't go by annual town meeting, but go by at the point we set a tax rate and figure out what, you know, the property tax is going to be. That's when, whatever the budget in place is considered the original.
Okay, thanks.
And if I'm, I'm right, if, um, not to misspeak, so correct me if I'm wrong. At that time, we hadn't, I hadn't successfully, uh, lobbied for, I haven't, I, I was lobbying for the staffing enhancements, but it was no, it was far from a sure thing at that point. It wasn't looking good at all. And we were on pace to, um, be in a position where we were going to ask for, we were on pace to be in a significant deficit again.
Right.
And if you look at our budget actual right now, we're, we're okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, so.
Tight, but okay.
That's kind of where I wanted to go next, if I may. So, you know, we, when we funded, and this is by no means a lack of support. You and I had a great conversation the other day on this. Um, you, as of the last report, you know, you were coming in at about a hundred and one thousand spent as of the end of March. It was sixty-seven percent for the year or so, even though we're seventy-five percent through the year. I know this is not a linear number that we can play games with. Back in March twenty-seventh, you gave us a report, you know, highlighting the fact that the ARPA funds had dropped us by about nineteen thousand in overtime from the January to March period of twenty-three to the January, March period of twenty-four. So hopefully that trend continues through the rest of this fiscal year, fingers crossed. You know, I, I really, with your new policies and such, did want to see a benefit here in the budget. And I, I would recommend that we move twenty-five thousand to the reserve fund to be in line with policy with the idea that we might have to come back. Right? We don't know. Like you said, we don't have all the data yet. But I mean, I'm thinking your trend line is to like a hundred and thirty-four thousand for this fiscal year if it stayed trending. And that's what, what I'll call six months of three people and three months of four people. So a next full fiscal year, hopefully you'd have a better number overall, even less.
So I, I don't dismiss, like I, you know, I, you know, obviously I work at, you, you guys are, are my boss. The thing that, that, that gives me apprehension is the young, the things that I, I fail to consider. Like the specialization, uh, bonus for the paramedics or, um, if I lose an employee or, which is, as you know, it's a constant state of, you know, we have, we still have high turnover. These are situations and scenarios that we haven't captured yet in our analysis or our, our sample period, for lack of a better term. And that's what gives me pause. And I'm very much driven by coming before you with, I want, I, my goal is to someday be able to lend Chief Perkins some money. That's like my, like I don't, I'm never going to look at my bottom line, come, you know, two months before the end of fiscal year and say, oh, I got some money to spend. Like my, my spending is based on my, my need. And my need is always to get out the door and do the job. Like I never want to be in that situation. I'm, I'm not going to be that person that is going to put extra people on or call back people frivolously because I've got extra money to spend. Like my, my goal is to be in the black and, 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 and I, and look, you know, I, if you guys give me a pat on the back, I, I would probably make my day too. Like I want to give you guys a, a certain, I want to have a surplus in my budget like you can't believe to make up for the past, past few years of, of, of red. That's my goal. If you think that, that the trends and the data is adequate to, to make that kind of a cut, um, I just, I can't promise you that I'll be in that position where I'm back here and, and asking for money. Because what, what drives the expenses is the mission, not, not the, not, not the, the, the line item, not the balance of my budget, like, you know, what I haven't spent.
No, and make no mistake, I fully support the mission and want that done. But if we go back to twenty-three, you're at a hundred and twenty-seven and change with none of these, you know, alterations in staffing. And, you know, I realize rates have, run rates have gone up and such, but, I mean, if you leave it as is, my recommendation would be to deduct it by twenty-five, move to the reserve fund. And see if the new policies and the new fund, you know, the new positions have helped us or not.
So even, and just to let you know how situational my budget is, the addition of the absence of one employee who's out on, uh, on leave, when they come back from leave after extended amount of time, their overtime habits, their willingness to take callbacks has a super impact on that one line item. Because they, also now they're, they're coming back every day and they were gone for a year and a half and they weren't there. I need them to come in. Like it's, there's a corresponding benefit to the talent that you come in, but there's also an expense related to that, that improvement. And it's very, like, it's, it's difficult for me to dive into it, but that's just one example of, of all the little variables that go into the volatility of, of my budget. And the volatility of my budget is, is why I, I so much would want one year of wiggle room to, to find out what my budget should be. If that makes sense. And I understand that, that you have a lot of competing needs and I've been listening all night to the competing needs that you guys are all facing. And, uh, I really want to be a team player and I really want to look for savings whenever I can. Um, but that, I'm just explaining to you my motivation today.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah. And I think that if, you know, we, we do end up voting to move, um, the twenty-five out of that line into the reserve account, that we'd be able to monitor, you know, should you get to that point where you're running down the hall to Todd doing, um.
My hands are up like this and it's a panic, it's a panic scene.
So at least we'll, we'll know.
No, I, I get what you're trying to do. I do. Um, and, and it doesn't prevent me from, uh, asking for the world all the time. I know I do. I ask a lot and it's, um, it's all related back to a sincere desire to do right by the town and, and give them a, a good value for their, for their, for their funding that they provide me.
I do have a question. Um, so when you're recruiting, um, to fill positions, what is the level of training that they have at this point? Cause I know that there are some, that we, we see some of the postings where they're actually coming out of, you know, they graduated the Fire Academy or, you know, they graduated this. So, um, cause I noticed that your line for, um, full-time training, um, has gone up.
Yeah.
You know, for, for this year. So is that, so are we funding the people in the Fire Academy? That's them, because I know we did a policy before that they, it would be a payback. So if they left, if we paid for it and they left, in a certain amount of time, it would be a certain percentage. You remember this?
Yeah, it was in the union contract where they would have to pay us back for the training.
And so what that became, that became an obstacle to my recruitment and retention, that they would see that, 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 that requirement to pay, pay back if they left and, and they didn't accept my position, which is where we are in, in our deficit or, or job market. Like we just don't have that many paramedics to, so there's fewer paramedics available than positions.
Yeah, but isn't it more helpful to pay for their education and then they leave?
That's exactly what the, the select board had done during those contract negotiations.
But it's become an obstacle to hiring people. People don't want to sign that agreement and they go elsewhere.
No, I understand that, but isn't that the point of it? We don't want those people.
Right.
We don't want someone.
Right. We don't want them coming here, getting educated here and then taking their education and leaving. And that was one of the reasons why we did do it. Yes, you are correct.
Right.
But it, in a, in a normal job market, it's beneficial for me to do that.
Right.
And this job market, it became an obstacle to, to hiring. People, when, when you've got multiple towns that you can choose from, you're not going to pick the town that's going to make you pay five thousand dollars if you leave within a couple of years. You're going to go somewhere else. And the hope is that they sign on with you. They like, they, they think I'm a great fire chief and I have wonderful people to work with and the town supports us and they want to stay. Um, but what happens is often they shop. They, this generation is not, in, not just in firefighting, but a lot, a lot of industries, they, they contract shop, they, they, um, they bounce around and they serve their best interests and I can't fault them for that.
They'll leave for five hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's where I'm kind of, they chase the dollar, they chase the facilities, the, who's got the nicest fire station, who's got the most, the most up-to-date contract. I, I don't know if I answered your concern prof, or your question properly, but.
No, Madam Chair, I think that's exactly what we thought when we did that as the select board in these twenty-twenty union contract negotiations.
It's in my back pocket. It just, it's kind of like knowing when, if things get better, I'll be able to apply that tool and to help stop or, or lessen the turnover. Um, but I'm not, you can shut the cameras off and say, I'm not in a position of a strong negotiating position right now. So what we do is when we recruit, um, the, the applications that come in, it's, uh, it's kind of like that Forrest Gump box of chocolates, you never know what you're going to get. And of course you look at the most attractive applicants. Sometimes you get some people that are great on paper, but then, you know, they're on their fourth or fifth fire department. Uh, so that's a red flag. Sometimes you get, uh, a qualified fighter that we trained and raised as a, as a, you know, as a kid, we brought him up and they're a medic student. So obviously you, you know what you have with that person and you show them, you, you show them preference and you hope that they can complete the paramedic program, which is very vigorous and very difficult. So it's, that's a gamble. I, I wish, I, I wish to God that it was, you know, nineteen ninety-five and, and we had eighty applicants for every position. But that's not what we're dealing with right now and it's pretty awful. And you hire people that, um, that you are very proud of and you hire people that you're less proud of. If I could say that as nicely as I possibly can.
It just, it, you know, just through the years, I mean, it's, because I just graduated from high school a couple of years ago. You know, and worked in a couple of positions, but it seems that we may need to take a step back and look at the current situation of how, where you had mentioned that people come in and they're looking for, you know, whatever it is, bonuses. I mean, there's all kinds of attractiveness, but I guess looking at, I'm hoping I can say this right because it's, it's here. I just don't know if I can get it out. But maybe taking a, a step back and saying, okay, so if this is what the market is looking for, what do we as a, um, a company or municipality need to do to adjust to be able to attract? And I'm not saying throwing money on the table, that's not always the answer.
Right. Well, Madam Chair, to that point, to Brenda's point, also, maybe it's time to revisit that. Maybe it's worth taking the risk. It's a fifty-fifty shot, someone's going to stay or not. So what we found was that so many were leaving that we were paying for everyone's training and they were leaving. But maybe we look at it, and I think what the chief is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that he may want to take the risk on someone leaving if we pay for their education. So maybe we look at it differently and we don't, we just don't pay it all back.
Just to clarify, the cost that's related to the education to the academy is free. We don't pay for the academy. The state, the state runs the academy for free. The cost is covering their position. So there, there's a vacant position by the academy, but that cost has been significantly decreased by the staffing enhancements that you've provided me. Because now I can operate a three-person minimum with four-person groups. So we just had Neil Severn, uh, Neil Severns, firefighter Neil Severns gravest weight from the academy. His presence at the academy, um, I think it may have cost me, um, he was, he's gone for ten weeks. I think it only cost me one or two shifts of overtime where it would have cost me every one of his shifts of overtime a year ago. So that's significant. So now, just by that, that, like you see how this all intertwined? Like you've provided me with significant release on the cost of education. What, would you, the line item, let's get back to the line item you're, you're looking at. So the line item that we, we're looking at is training, it's overtime provided to members to come to the department and train. So while they're in the building, they're responding to calls. They're going to, uh, I think it's just over nine calls a day now. Once a month, generally speaking, unless we have an immediate demand, uh, some kind of demand for, for correction, like I've seen something wrong. We're bringing the group together. We're going to correct it. We're going to train on something. When we bring people back to the station, the qualified fighters are paid their hourly rate and the full-time firefighters are paid time and a half. That's what that's paid for is for update training, whether, if we have to update them on new medical equipment. Uh, the ladder and service training is a perfect example of that. So we have a new ladder truck. We had four identical trainings, four separate trainings. The, the, the firefighters get to pick one of those four trainings. They came in and they're compensated for their time. And that's a contractual obligation to compensate them for the time. And that's what that line item pays. So that's a perfect example of a line item that's been stagnant for a while. And when they get their overtime or they get their contractual pay raises, their overtime rate goes up and, and it, it's become out of whack. We haven't adjusted the training, the training budget to keep pace with the pay changes. And so what I did here was I looked for a line item that's overfunded. And so that, that change to the education is an internal adjustment on my part. It's not, it's not something, it's not part of the overall, overall four percent increase to the salary side of the budget. That's strictly, the four percent strictly contractual obligation. And you see a line and change to, to the education portion there, that's something I took away from qualified fighter callback because we've seen less and less qualified fighter participation. So we're not, we have a history of not spending up to that, that maximum line. So you, you'll see, I think it's, uh, I, you see call shift coverage. So that's the use of qualified fighters to, to cover full-time, uh, full shifts when there's an out, when somebody's been out. So we have fewer overtime shifts because we have better staffing and the difference between our staffing levels and minimum earning. So we're going to use those qualified fighters fewer times. So I've reduced that line by a certain amount of money. And I moved that money to the training thing to help compensate for the increasing deficit because we haven't adjusted that over, that line because of the increasing overtime rate. Does that make sense?
It does, and I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but you reduced one line by five hundred and increased the other by almost nine thousand.
Okay, so, um, there was also.
I'm not picking, remember.
No, 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 no.
I don't know about any of this. This is my first time being here.
You'll see like, um, you'll see a three thousand dollar reduction in hourly wages for qual men. So it was a combination of our, our, uh, less use of our qualified fighters.
Okay.
And increased, increased use of our, our full-time firefighters. So it's, you'll see like three lines with negative, uh, changes to them. Those are all things that I did internally without, outside of the, you know, the, the contractual obligations. These are things that I've looked for in, in like little, little bit of savings and to try and compensate for the, the, what I see as an underfunded line on the training side.
Making it work.
Trying.
Got it. Okay.
Trying.
You just have too many acronyms. We need the decoder rings. We go through this whole thing.
This is, this is an amazing, like I've never, it's just everything here, like that's, you, 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 you can attest to it. It's a complicated budget to keep track of. And it took me almost two years to really get my head around how one thing changes another thing, how another thing, and it's, uh, yeah, it, it, uh, it's a, it's a challenge.
Yes, please. Um, going back to the people, you know, not paying or making them refund for training. What if we reversed the roles and said, okay, we, you pay for your training and each year you're here, we give you a extra payment towards your training. That can get them to stay and still gives them the outcome at the end. Instead of paying it all upfront and then hoping they don't leave.
Yeah.
Or making them sign a contract where no one's comfortable. You say, okay, and, and I do this in my field, in my business, I say, okay, you go out and get trained. And every year I benefit from that training. If it costs you two hundred dollars, I'll give you a fifty dollars a year over four years to pay for that. You know, just, just as an example, but instead of role reversing it the other way, push it out to give them an incentive to stay is now they'll get reimbursed for their training. Then after the four years, if they want to go, uh, you, you can't hold them hostage because you pay for their training forever, but at least they got. But at least they've got four years out of us.
And, and just to be.
Oh, sorry, I was just gonna, uh, Madam Chair, uh, Mike, but I thi- I think you were gonna add it in, that we do have incentives for training, um, at different levels. Um, for reimbursements to encourage just like what you were saying. Larry, uh, uh, about continuous education for, uh, the, the firefighters, paramedics and beyond.
So there's three different, basically three different prongs to their incentives to be trained. There's a, a, a degree, uh, there's, uh. They get incentives to have degrees, associates, bachelor's, master's degree. Uh, they get incentives for having NFPA certifications. So people, some people don't do well at college, they do great with, with practical training. So you become a certified pump operator, you become a hazmat technician. Uh, you become, uh, confined space rescue, high angle rescue. Each one of them has a, has a one hundred dollar, um, a year. Uh, bonus that they, they get. Um, there's sick leave bonuses, they get bonuses for not using their sick leave, uh, things, things of that nature. Um, and so there, there's incentives there. One of the, the, the things, and if there's any firefighters out there listening, they're gonna hate me in a second. One of the things that causes fire chiefs problems is the portability of their pensions. Um, fire, firefighters can go from shop to shop and they never lose time towards retirement. Uh, so there's really not a huge incentive to stay at a, at a place because they don't lose anything at all. And in this climate, we have municipalities that are offering, uh, lateral transfers. They're honoring all the years of service that they've given another town and bring them in at that, that step and that pay rate automatically. That's how competitive it's become, uh, for medics out there. Um, and another thing that I wanna clarify is that our, our town does not pay for paramedic training. That comes out of the employee's pocket. And it's a, it's a, it's a condition of continued employment that they achieve their medical license. When I hire them, they have to sign a contract with me and I usually give them a timeframe. I, it's generally twenty-four months to achieve. Paramedic licensure or they're dismissed. Um, and the cost of that program is on their own, we do not pay for it. I champion programs where we provide scholarship programs to see like our unqualified fighters. Um, and I haven't gotten a lot of traction on that, it's something I can, um, I own, I have just limited ability to, limited capacity to, to focus on things. Um, and I could swing around back to something like that if you think we could get good mileage out of it. Um, but generally speaking, the. Our expense as far as new employees is the, the equipment. It's, the expense is related to the vacant position while they're at the academy. Because of the new staffing model, that expense has become less. Um, but traditionally, these were very impactful things to my budget. And things that caused a lot of unpredictability, which drove everybody in this room nuts. Um, and we've provided some stability with the new staffing model. Um, and as far as the, the expense related to their training, um, it's become significantly less. We don't pay for the academy, we don't pay for paramedic license, that cost is on there.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just, uh, gratefully, obviously, um, a big component of revenues is the ambulance fees. We estimate about a million dollars, uh, a year, a million twenty-five next year. So you on target of. And obviously, we've had meetings about this, and the goal for fiscal year twenty-four is a million dollars, which this budget. The twenty fiscal year twenty-four is based on a million dollars.
We're gonna hit that number.
Good.
Um, one of the things that we were, uh, one of the mandates and one of the, the will of the board was that I, uh. Reduce the number of trips of our ambulance going out of town. Um, there were. Uh, still a camera, uh, other board members were very upset about the disparity in mutual aid. We were going to Middleboro, uh, as many ti- as thirty times a month. Uh, so once a day, we were going into Middleboro to cover the calls at one point. Uh, so we just kept on hammering away and hammering away at Middleboro. Complaining, complaining, complaining. And what turned the tide was actually revealing to Middleboro the amount of revenue that we made off of their residents. Um, and their private ambulance company that they employ. Got very, also motivated to provide an additional ambulance to, to Middleboro. So, but what you guys were able to provide me was relief from that lost revenue. So our, our, our trips to, I think the last time I checked, and it, it changes, um, we're, we're down about forty-five percent. Uh, from, uh, in our trips to Middleboro. So we had, at one point it was up to, it was at ninety percent for the first two or three months when they had the, the. The, the additional ambulance added, so significant reduction in mutual aid to Middleboro. Whereas, we've stabilized around forty-five percent reduction, which is significant. Um, so that's also a significant reduction in our revenue at baseline. But what you were able to give me is a rate change. Uh, and, and also, we were able, what the state gave us was an adjustment to our Medicare rates. And so between those two adjustments, we've been able to compensate for the fewer transports, the reduced number of transports. So we've held a line on revenue where we haven't seen the, you know, we were making a hundred fifty thousand dollars annually from ballpark, from Middleboro. And ambulance revenue. And so forty-three percent reduction and, and a hundred fifty thousand dollars is a significant hit to our revenue number. Um, but we were able to offset that by with, with rate changes and changes to Medicare rate.
So you will meet the million dollars for fiscal year twenty-four and a million twenty-five for fiscal year twenty-five. Thank you.
We're marching out as the, we're basically, we're right at our revenue number, uh, for last year.
Excellent. Good to hear.
Anybody else? Any else?
I have one question. Um, would a successful community paramedicine program reduce the amount of ambulance revenue?
It would indirectly, uh, reduce the number of transports.
Yeah.
It would reduce, potentially has the, the ability to reduce, um, the workload. And, uh, it could change the staffing model of the department if it was deployed, uh, properly in the future. The thing that it has to happen is, um, it has to, has to generate revenue. It's, there's a cost involved in any operation. And if, if, if we develop a system to offset that cost, then. Then this is gonna be a, a big game changer for, for a lot of municipalities, including Lakeville.
Alright, we're just gonna hit a couple, couple of highlights here. Um, so sustained a two percent increase. Two thousand seven hundred sixty-six new town record, um, in call volume and a record three hundred and fifty simultaneous, um, calls. The grants, five hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and three, um, dollars and forty-nine cents in ARPA award from. Plymouth County Commissioners for the purchase of a new ambulance. Um, six thousand from DFS Safe Grant. Uh, for public safety education initiatives. A thirteen thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollar grant from DFS Equipment Grant. Uh, for personal, uh, protective equipment replacement program. Seven thousand from FEMA E M P G grant. Uh, for search and rescue equipment. You donated obsolete equipment, I remember this coming in front of the board recently. To six, uh, fire departments in Guatemala, uh, which contained thirty-six self-contained breathing apparatuses. Thirty-four air cylinders and thirty-nine SCBA masks. Uh, you graduated four firefighters from MFA Recruiting Academy.
Yeah, Massfire Academy.
Okay.
Acronyms.
Okay, yep, cause, yep. Um, and then updated the, uh, department's ballistic protection equipment.
Yeah, it's not something to celebrate, but it's the necessity of our modern world.
Sure.
Yeah. We are on pace right now this year to have over two million dollars in grant applications out. That will go out before the end of the calendar year. Um, I love free money. I love, uh, I love, um. Bringing something into the town that, that doesn't have a direct burden on our residents. That's, uh, I take a lot of pride in our, our grant writing. And it's very much a team effort. My, my core group helps me out a great deal on that.
Chief, who, who's your primary grant writer? Is it still, um, Lieutenant Sylvia?
Lieutenant Sylvia takes on most of the federally AFT grants, I take on the, on the Massachusetts stuff.
Gotcha. Much appreciation to both of you for doing that. It's something consistently for the last five, six years. Um, that we've been able to see, uh, coming out of the fire department, um, that, uh, we hadn't seen prior, prior to that. Um, and it's, it's an area where your team, uh, led by you really excels. Uh, and I'm very impressed by it all the time. And it's something like, uh, uh. Member Carboni was talking about when we were trying to get all our grants together, uh, two years ago and, and do it. And we could just see that consistency between the police and the fire and the Director of Inspeccional Services and all of the grant writing. That they were always doing every year to support and, uh, and prop up sometimes, um, some of the services in town, so much appreciated.
No, thank you for, for being aware of that, those efforts. It's, it's, um, it, it's, it's a lot of work to write the grants. Uh, Ryan puts a lot of hours into it, he's very good at it. And, uh, there's very few changes that we have to make, uh, we, we meet and kinda confer and stuff. The state grants are, are, I like to learn and, uh, I've always been a student and, and coming into Massachusetts, uh, where. We, we, we take it for granted, but Massachusetts has a one, has a really, uh, great grant program, uh, the DFS grants and, and. And MEMA grants, uh, that aren't available, uh, in the state that I came from. So it was kind of, uh. It really, I really felt good to have these resources available to us and, uh, I couldn't ignore them. I, I had to put the work in to, to make sure we brought the money back.
It is not going unnoticed, for sure.
Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you, Chief, very much.
Thank you. All right, thank you, guys. I, um, no, I, if, if, I'm sorry to hold you guys a little bit, I. It's, um, it's a challenging budget and I'm not looking for sympathy, um, but I do get a lot of support and, um. It's not lost on me. You guys have been great partners. Um, I come to you with problems and you guys, uh. From, from Todd to even, uh, Mr. Noon's in his, his short amount of time here, it's, uh. It's, it's always a team effort and if anybody's at home watching this, um, everybody owns a share in our successes. And they also take a share in our problems and they, and they work very hard to correct them. Um, I know it's easy to be cynical in this, in this time of ours. Uh, but you have really good people advocating for you at home, okay? Thank you.
Okay, anybody having any new business? Old business? Oh, you have business with them, but before, um, turn it over, cause we can adjourn and you, you can keep going. Well, that was nice. I, never. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, let everybody know that tomorrow evening, um, we will be continuing our budget discussion. So, um, this is for your, your preview or just to let you know what you can preview tomorrow evening. Uh, we'll be meeting with our Parks Department, Accounting, our Internet Technology. We'll be talking about our debt, um, fixed costs, our library and capital. So, um, please make sure you put that on your, um, your alarm so that you can tune in appropriately at five thirty tomorrow. And, um, just for the record, we'll be at the, the Lakeville Senior Center tomorrow evening, five thirty. So, um, with that, if there's nothing else for the Select Board, um, we will adjourn here at.
Madam Chair, should we maybe stay open just since it's our request that they'll be discussing?
Alright, cause as a previous, yes, we'll stay here. I wouldn't want you to.
Thank you. I mean, we could solve the problem if you wanna adjourn.
That's okay, we're good.
Okay, so, um, item one on our agenda is discussing possible golden reserve fund transfer. So again, of the state, again, the request is to transfer eleven thousand dollars from the reserve fund. Uh, again, to cover the, uh, cost associated with the town administrator. So with that, I know, uh, Member Costan has a question.
Yeah, um, why? Why do we have to hire someone to do the search when we can't interview our own people? We can't take in our own resumes? Help me out here. Eleven thousand's a lot of money.
Yeah.
LinkedIn works really quick.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Um, as one of us had some experience through this process, um, in seeing what other communities do. Uh, many, many communities hire search firms. Uh, they do have a network, uh, they have a larger outreach than what we would have. Uh, they have the contacts, uh, and, uh, that is why. In many, many, many cases, communities go out and hire search firms. We did solicit proposals, uh, Tracy led that effort. Uh, we did receive two proposals, uh, we reached out to three or four. Uh, and MRI was the low bidder. So it's more of a networking situation and we would. Uh, you know, it is expensive, they do put a lot of time, they will reach out to the community. They will reach out to the Select Board members, they will reach out to all department heads. So it's a pretty extensive, um, effort. The first meeting is Friday evening, um, open to the public, will be, uh, broadcast. So you will see MRI, representative from MRI, will be at the meeting. And I'm sure they could give a better answer than I can, but that has been my experience over the years.
Madam Chair, yes, I mean, I, I can add to that too, Larry. Um, so, everything Bob said and more. Um, is what we got the last time we did the search. Um, they also. It's really time. Time restrictive for a committee of five or seven people to go through fifty resumes. So what they also do for us is they go in, they look at, I think the last time we got fifty or sixty resumes. From almost thirty different states. So they go in and they do the first looksee. So if they don't even have the minimum that we say we can live with. You know, and what they do is they condense that to, last time it was between fifteen to eighteen, I think. Of the, what they felt were the top candidates. A couple of us asked for their next couple. And they provided those, but what they do is they really go through and they say, okay, these person, these people don't even have. You know how they always say when you're looking for a job, overreach? Well, the town administrator position isn't necessarily one that, you know, you wanna overreach. Um, so they, they were able to do that. Plus, they do like, um, sometimes they'll do a first interview. Um, they also help with the background stuff, they do all those kinds of things for us too.
Actually eleven thousand is not bad.
Yeah.
It's actually, considering everything that we do, I've, I've been through this, my wife's been through it with, um, it's actually, they do a lot of front work. But they just don't have time to do. And eleven thousand is pretty reasonable.
Yeah, and, um, MRI actually throws in an extra, um, they. As part of the application process, and I, I'm sure we'll discuss this, so it's not positive, but one thing that they like to do is they like to assign essay questions. So, um, you get a lot of information from those essay questions that you necessarily wouldn't cap- capture. At just an interview. And they read every single one who's qualified as part of their process. So, I mean, you know, I don't have a job, but Chris does, who's on the committee, Maureen does, who's on the committee, Nate does. You know, so they're doing a lot of that legwork. And they're also all municipally experienced. Um, I think two of them are town managers, previous, former town managers. Yeah, yep.
If I may add some more as well. So in addition to having gone through this, um, the last go-around myself, the thing I also liked was. They know the current market, they could give us backing data on salaries, like the last one they showed us that Lakeville was not even close to the middle of the road. For a town of our, our size budget. So we did an increase to, to attract more talent the last time. Um, there was also, they know who maybe just didn't get a job, and it might have been for a specific reason. And that specific reason doesn't apply to our town, so they can say, yeah, they'd be a great person to bring in as a candidate here. Um, they're also talking to people that are still in the position today, but might be looking. So then they can, they can notify them quickly and say, you look like you'd be a good fit for this town, blah, blah, blah. So, you know. Not to repeat what other, yeah, the network was excellent, not to repeat what, um, the others said, but just. They cut down on so much of the legwork that I don't think our board of five or seven has time for.
And I wanted to just add one more, um, clarifier on something that they do that's kind of an intangible. Uh, that intangible is they provide an unbiased opinion of the candidate. Um, and they bring that to the town. Um, they're, they're working off the set of criteria. And they're working off, uh, professional skills and abilities and just like, uh, I think it was Leah who said. You know, they're doing that deep dive, um, you know, through three to seven meetings with the candidate. Plus doing, uh, the aptitude tests and, um, it, in, uh, the long form answers. And all of those things in order to make sure that the candidate is the candidate. And, and not a, a strict political appointee, um, for the role, um, and as. um for the role. Um and it allows space uh between, I guess, any perception of something being if the fix is in or any of those type of perceptions, it allows that space in between um to have an unbiased opinion of someone's professional competencies for the role. Um and that's important um in this day and age, um to make sure uh we're getting the highest quality of candidates.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, they're still presenting us four, five, ten, whatever candidates and the and the committees make the decision.
Yes.
And I'm saying, this is the guy higher. I just, I just see this as a skilled survey type situation and I just couldn't wrap my head around eleven thousand dollars for skilled surveys.
You know, and off of what Maureen said, I mean, just during the actual interviews, they're there during the interviews with you. Um I think they, because we were strictly remote, because it was still COVID, the last time, I believe they were with us remote, but we had decided to do the semifinals. So there's two rounds of interviews that were, you know, which are done in executive session um for confidentiality. But um it was funny because we had, they really stress inequitable, you know, search. Everyone gets the same and we were getting ready to move on and I got a little note put on my desk that said, you forgot to ask this question because it was, every candidate should, you know, of course, further questions go in other directions, but everyone should have the opportunity to answer. You know, the same, so they keep us on our toes too. And I think it was, it's good that the question was asked, Larry, um because we have to, you know, look at everything and if you don't know
Yeah, we're just, we're asking every department to cut their budgets and now we just, eleven thousand dollars for to hire somebody to move in on.
You know, they um oftentimes the town administrator, town manager positions are referred to as the top job. It's, it's our highest job, um you know, our highest level job that we would have a hire in in the town and if I'm not mistaken, the pool of uh, you know, candidates, I guess, uh is shallow.
Yeah.
Uh we have a lot of um people that have worked for communities that have been there for years and years that have retired out of those communities. Um you have others that are, you know, kind of chalking around too. So we want to make sure that where the people that are in the market, that know the market, that have the relationships in the market are be able, could ask the question. They could pick up the phone and say, hey, Larry, you know, where, you know, this town, they're looking for this person. And this person might say, hey, I know somebody that's actually considering, you know, moving down in that area that I think would be an excellent candidate. We wouldn't necessarily know that and people don't necessarily look at, you know, they might look at LinkedIn or they might not look at the Lakeville website. So we have to do some
Yeah, I just, I
I know you get it, I know.
I get your points. I I also, I also think down the road to in in my trade, we would have called them headhunters. Well, put it out, hey, go find me a guy that runs this department. And then they get me that guy and we pay them their fee and they get the guy and six months later, they're calling that guy saying, hey, listen, I just found you another job up in Nashville. That's just, just the stuff I see.
If I may, I think MRI is the firm that has the guarantee, right? So if the person doesn't stay, I forget the number. If the person doesn't work out, they'll do
So we there.
All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I know personally, the principal who's been assigned to this project, um he's an experienced town manager up in Andover. He's a great guy and he'll be very pleased with his work, well respected in the field.
With that, I'll introduce a motion to approve the transfer of eleven thousand dollars in reserve fund.
Second.
Motion.
I vote for your motion, I'll second, release the second.
Okay. All right, and Darren?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
And Plunka, aye.
Thank you. Uh the next item is discuss possible vote for the our April third uh meeting minutes. They are still being prepared. So we'll table that for a, a subsequent meeting. Uh item number three with budget hearing, we've completed that and we do not have any new business. We do not have any old business. Uh so with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the Finance Committee meeting. With you.
Well, keep it open, I like that.
Second.
Thank you. Uh Darren, vote?
Aye.
Aye and Plunka, aye. Thank you.
All right, so we have not voted tonight, so I'm gonna entertain the motion to adjourn, but we'll have to do a roll call because we do have somebody that's remote, so. So moved. All right, Leah.
Second.
Second candidate.
Oh, Bren, Bren has seconded the motion. All right, Fabian, aye. Fabian, aye.
Donnie, aye.
Carboni, aye.
Stay, aye.
Kennedy, aye.
All right, eight, eight oh six.